I was getting to order please. Right. Doing this in the touch.
And with legislation to the line of United States. And to the Republican Party which stands one nation under God and of this law with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let your roll call show all board members at the time. And welcome back to Melissa and Eric from the World Travels and Ellie. Yes. Um, and I'm assuming we have no sus and comments. So we'll go to a board member committee reports and we'll start with Sue.
Um, I had coffee with Ben and um, just attended the end of MSBA.
Right.
Um, I have left me the course.
Okay, done.
Um, I had agenda planning last week and then yesterday I attended the summer um, MSBA. Which um, had two great speakers and one was on policy and I brought away some good things for policy um, that I'm looking forward to. Um, and market calendars, January sixteenth and seventeenth, that's the winter conference.
Let's not talk about winter yet. Eric.
Melissa. Um, I just did public engagement and also I wanted to publicly throw out a shout out to our awesome choir and band because both um, Jim Baxter and Charlie Mole from our high school conductors were there conducting this group of so many children across Europe. But it's amazing and it was the really three hundred something people total that went, so it was.
It's crazy. Brought everybody back too.
I mean, I don't know, my flight group came back, so.
Oh, that was interesting.
Yeah, Eric got really got the tail.
Thirty hours of travel coming back. And we got stranded in Chicago.
Oh, no.
My, mine was fine, so.
You know, if that's, you know, normally we, we pump a lot of that stuff out on social media, so. I don't know that we got any good pictures or anything.
I shared a bunch of the concerts on my page and on my school board page, I have some on there too.
That's where I saw them actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chad.
Nothing report?
Nothing. Um, I had agenda planning and then last Friday I attended um, a staff executive board meeting, which is actually was C. Um, and we had public engagement before this meeting. And that's it. So uh, we have superintendent report. We don't have our.
Think you normally do your, your student, you do the student first normally.
Not on our agenda, but.
I don't think we knew she was going, but we're happy you're.
Sorry, she's coming up, yeah.
I thought I'd show up since it's first one for school.
Yeah.
Um, student council, we just had our like summer meeting kind of like before school welcome meeting, I don't know what you would call that. Um, to meet all our new members, um, it was fun, got now everyone got our like standing committees, et cetera. Um, hopefully if Ben didn't have COVID, Morgan would already be here, but um, looking forward to schedule a meeting with Ben. To get Morgan and Sue, to get Morgan here, train her in, and then, yeah.
So Morgan's are.
Morgan Lunt is our another new rep.
Is what, what grade is she?
She will be going into her. So sophomore year.
Sophomore.
Junior? Sophomore, sophomore. We could not find a junior who was willing to do so.
Well, maybe we should stay a couple of years.
I think she will.
All right, thank you, Ellie. Ben.
Just a couple of things about the uh, public engagement meeting that we had. Uh, we, we finally unveiled a uh, a draft of a brochure that we created for realtors in the community. It's something that we've had on our to do, to do list for quite a long time. And uh, we're excited about that, we'll have a s- a special spot on the website for that and. Um, I will then broker some meetings with the different realtors in the, in the community to provide them with those and give them more information about all of the different. Um, programming that we have in our school district, so we're super excited about that. Uh, we also talked at uh, public engagement about um, our plan for our task force that will be starting up. Um, in September and I believe we'll have one meeting in September, two in October, one in uh, November, you know. So I think it's all kind of set up to, to culminate and, and uh, be done in January and February. It's pretty intensive, uh, we have lots of players involved in terms of helping to uh, present to community members. Um, and educate um, those that are going to be on the, on that task force, so. It's going to be a continuation of that group that we had about eighty or ninety show up uh, in the last week of March. Uh, we have a website built out, we've had some communications and emails with those folks. I've been doing some individual meetings with some of the members of that task force and I will continue to do so, so. That will really, really be cranking up and it's going to be a big part of our next school year um, coming up. I wanted to give some uh, uh, let you know that we're, we're continuing moving forward with our um. Uh, adding additions of uh, K eight to our Princeton Online Minnesota. Uh, as of now, we have just over thirty uh, open enrollments from across the state of Minnesota. Um, so that's thirty more than what we've, that we would have had. Uh, we are cautiously optimistic that uh, we can uh, bring in uh, more students before the school, the start of the school year. Um, I personally think the realistic goal would maybe be fifty. Um, but again, that's fifty uh, students that we otherwise wouldn't have had. Uh, which I think is pretty huge and I think that's just a start and we can really grow that. Um, when we're talking about. Uh, student numbers though, it is important for you to know that we did, uh, you all remember when we um, debated on what we should set our kindergarten. Projection at and we set it at two ten. Currently, I believe we're only at one ninety-one. And uh, you know, of course, we hope that we'll get a handful more, but I don't think it's realistic that we're going to get twenty more. Um, so we are doing some shifting of some staffing and uh, one of the decisions that we made. Uh, yesterday is to transition one of the F D E that we had assigned to kindergarten. To uh, add a section in fifth grade, which our numbers uh, were um. Concerning where we were sitting at thirty-one uh, in some of those classes, uh, it was going to be thirty and thirty-one. And uh, now with the addition of that teacher, um, I believe that we'll be at twenty-six, twenty-seven, which is right in that ballpark. Um, that is the group that we've also had concerns with uh, that they missed it quite a bit in their kindergarten and first grade year for COVID. And uh, you know, I think that was the right move. Uh, we'll still be in range in our kindergarten uh, rooms and uh, we should be in good shape in all, all areas. Um, but this is something that we had to keep our eye on and uh, of course, you know, a month till school starts, things. Could change, so it's just, we have to be flexible and nimble and, you know, modify and adjust as needed. Um, you mentioned policy, uh, Don, I think it's important for people to know that. Uh, one of the policies that we'll have to uh, work to add and I believe that we'll have to have that in place by March-ish. Is it, is going to be this uh, cellphone policy.
Yeah, March twenty-fifth.
Yeah, so that's something that uh, that I think we will need to start, we'll need to start working on. Um, I'm not sure that uh, Don, you would probably know this because you were there, it would, did they, does MSBA have a model policy for that?
So actually, that was actually one policy that was talked about quite a bit yesterday, um, there was a couple of things I want to roll out with that. Um, it sounds like almost every district is doing, the principals came out with one, but it seems like every district is going to kind of draft their own policy. And it's going to be different in each building and there's a lot of um, districts. Um, doing a lot of engagement with their community and starting to roll it out now. Especially getting the word out and when you do some of those public meetings, um. It gets the community and your parents and students thinking about it because it does go into act during the school year. And a lot are going to roll it out, a soft rollout right after Christmas break and then you'll have your hard rollout on March.
So I, I think what we'll, what we can do is, you know, we can meet with policy, go through our strategy. We'll have to get our admin and uh, team members involved too, because it's one thing to have a policy, you mean, you know, policy, but in terms of implementing the policy and enforcing the policy.
They're going to have to work with it every day.
Uh, yeah, you know, and it's a huge, obviously it's a huge part of student life, right? I mean, um, so I just something that we'll, that we know that we need to do is legislate it. Um, you know, what we have done historically, we haven't had a policy, but it has been in handbooks. And it's been for the most part, teacher, um, teacher discretion, you know, the teacher in their classroom, you know, on day one, they have their expectations for their class. And uh, students are expected to follow that and uh. You know, some like, some teachers, you know, teach the cell phones can't be out, period. Uh, and some probably have more flexibility in that, and it's been more of that discretion. And every school is a little different too, so we'll have to talk about what that's going to be, but that's, you know, that's one that, that we'll have to tackle here.
Also with that, we do have a couple of policies that does touch it, so if we don't get one in place by then, we would still be covered.
Okay.
So there's some overlap with that as well, so.
Uh, and then I'll just end with this, I started my day this morning at uh, uh, the M Minister Department of Ed, uh, back to school kickoff. And uh, told the story like four times, but it was very interesting more, morning because at about eight AM, our. Uh, one of the welcoming speakers was First Lady Walz. And uh, that was right when kind of the hubbub was starting to come up, out about uh, the vice presidency piece and uh, there was some. Lots of commotion because they didn't think she was going to show up and then all of a sudden she did show up and um, had a very. Much more sophisticated security detail with safety service and the whole business than what uh, you know, she typically or would have had. So I mean, it was just a really uh, and she gave a great, she had some great remarks and then she was whisked off her way, but it was kind of a. Oh, a cool little way to be part of, a small part of history in some way, even though, you know. Really small, but it was, it was all happening during that little period of time, but it was a, you know, it was a good day today and lots of good networking. Um, with colleagues across the state and uh, one more thing too, just more of an FYI for the board, some of you know that I've mentored. Um, new superintendents over the years, um, most recently, uh, the superintendent in Cambridge Di Santi and the superintendent in Sark Rapids. Um, and now I'm going to be mentoring the Litch, the new Litchfield superintendent, so I'll be meeting with her and. Um, probably bring her around Princeton a time or two and um, hopefully help her in her journey as a new superintendent, so. I'll end my remarks unless you have further questions.
Any questions for Ben? All right, we'll move on, uh, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented? So, motion's been made by Don, is there a second?
I'll second, Melissa.
Second by Melissa, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. All right, agenda is approved. Um, would somebody like to make a motion to discuss and act on the previous board meeting minutes?
Someone.
Uh, motion been made by Chad, is there a second?
Sorry.
Second by Eric Minx, um, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, minutes are approved, the consent agenda. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Oh, Melissa.
Motion's been made by Melissa, is there a second? Second. Second by Sue, um, any comments or questions on the consent?
Um, I think it's underneath the student service handbook. Um, the titles and that are wrong for members, so just correct that before.
Okay.
All right.
I'll send them, I'll take it to next.
Anything else? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, all right, our only information item tonight is the SRO agreement.
Yeah, you know, I, as you know, we've been working to get a, a formalized actual contract with the city. Um, we've had a, in, in a lot of years, um, you know, more of a. A one or two page, you know, document and it didn't really explicitly uh, have everything laid out. Uh, the city shared uh, a sample contract with us. We sent it to Nick, Nick uh, basically redid everything and we've been back and forth with the city a few times. And uh, you know, we feel like this is a, a, a good uh, contract and uh. It's, it's a first reading, um, I will do some more checking with the city, um, see if there's any. Small minor revisions that still may be, need to be made, but uh, I think it's good to go, I think. Um, you can, you know, review it and read through it, but it's, it's basically um. Reflects everything that we've done, you know, it's, it's nothing earth shattering. Um, the one piece that has nothing to do with this contract, that is a separate part of it though, is we are still are waiting on a bill. Um, from them for, I think the last year and a half. Um, ish and uh, you know, and we've had some. Um, disagreements in terms of, you know, what that bill should look like, so we're still working through that. But again, that has nothing to do with this contract here that will be for the future.
It's not because of the um, with the laws changed and all that, is it?
Well, it mostly just has to do with these, um, that they provided services uh, to us, there was um. A certain number of days, many, many days that um. They, I don't know what the right word is, refused to provide that service based upon some of the changes in legislation. And uh, you're all aware of that, right, and that was their decision and. Although I shared with them, I disagreed with that decision, I also shared with them that I respect that they're right to make that decision and uh. And that, that is what it is, so I mean, now it's just a matter of.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what those, how many days we would owe them for, and I guess I've been of the opinion the whole time. Is that we would owe them for the days that they provide services.
According to their agreement, yeah.
Um, so I mean, that's just uh, something that we'll have to continue to work through. So I, I, I do anticipate getting a bill at some point that we're, we've been waiting on.
I don't think so.
And, and the thing that's tricky with that is that um. I, I believe that they, you know, our school year is what, like September to. June, end of May, and they bill us from January one to.
Oh.
So you kind of, you kind of cross into two, two school years all the time, so you know, it's a little bit tricky to keep track of everything. So.
Any other questions for Ben on that? That'll be on our next, our next board meeting agenda for approval.
How well did it go with all of them buildings?
Um, well, I mean, we survived, um, and. I think that uh, you know, thankfully we didn't have any issue, you know, knocking with it there, that we. It was an urgent matter that we desperately needed them for in the building at that time. Um, I'll tell you that uh, but of course, we all know that could change anytime. Uh, um, when I consulted with our administrative team. You know, there was some discussion around that, but I think at the end of the day, given the fact that schools. Um, need to be concerned and I hate to say this, with people coming in to hurt. Um, children and adults and potentially kill them. Um, there is just something about having a peace of mind of having law enforcement um, available and on site. And you know, there's lots of different services that they provide and I think that the. You know, community policing and building relationships with students and there's just so many positive pieces with that. Um, but you know, we do what we do, right, you make do with what you got. And that's what our teachers and schools are used to, so we did, that's what we did for the period of time that they weren't there. But uh, you know. And, and when we're, we're having budget issues, of course, everything needs to be looked at, but you know, we were of the mindset that, you know, we're not quite. At the crisis mode in terms of budget that we would need to consider eliminating that, so.
I know. And is it still fifty percent for one and seventy-five percent for the other?
Yes.
And why do we keep doing that? And then do fifty fifty for both? I mean, if they're going to play this game, then I mean.
Well, I mean, I don't know for sure until I get the bill, what kind of. What kind of game is going to be played, I guess, um, I'm hopeful that it's just going to be. Um, what it is, you know, we're going to be billed for the days that they provided service. Um, but I think that we'll have to really have some strong discussions if we get billed for other days. Than that, but you know, I don't know, I mean, I guess it comes down to what, you know, what's fair, um. The school year is how many days, um, we have a hundred and eighty-four stu-, hundred and eighty-four uh, teacher contract days with about a hundred and seventy-one. Hundred and seventy-two student contact days, that's generally the number of days that they would work. Uh, during the school year and, you know, which I think is what about three fourths of a, of a calendar year, basically. So, you know, seventy-five percent. Um, and fifty percent, it seems, I guess it seems fair to me, but it's something that. You know, as a board, if you'd like to ask to review further or, I mean, certainly to do that.
And did our percentage of this contract go up from the previous contract, because I know the city. Did a work comp study or a pay equity study?
Well, that, you know, that's a thing.
Lot of employees. Were given increases off of that, which would in turn.
Yep.
Cost us more.
You're, you're absolutely right with that, when it's based on percentages. Um, we are at the mercy of, you know, whole salary and benefit increases of law enforcement, of course, they're going to get. Wage increases and benefit increases and they deserve that, so us, you know, seventy-five percent of a higher number is going to cost us more.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other thing that, that is somewhat out of our control too, and, and it's not really identified in the contract, if you will. Is it, you know, that some, a more senior officer is going to cost more than a less senior officer. Um, so when you have more senior officers, you, the percentage is going to be more. If they had some potential turnover at some point and they had a less senior officer, then it would be much less. Um, but it really just depends on that and that's, I guess, the, the pros and the cons of when you have it based on a percentage.
And the city or the chief has the authority then to say this officer is going to be an SRO this year? I mean, we don't have control over that or have authority over that, do we?
Yeah, well, I mean, we have, it says in there in consultation.
Okay.
Um, with us. Um, but I, you know, I do believe that, you know, we don't have the authority to hire. Uh, you know, make hiring decisions for the city employee. Um, that is at their discretion, um. But there is some language in the contract and you can review it, that, that if we were to see any kind of issues or problems, there's a way for us to address that. And potentially, um, you know, change course if needed. But yeah, we don't, we, there's some consultation and collaboration and who it will be, but we don't have the final say on who that might be.
Okay.
So the compensation is higher for one than the other?
Mm-hmm.
Why is that?
Well, it's based on a, you know, on years of service, kind of like. Like our contracts here, it's based on seniority and, and. So first year officer does not get paid as much as a fifth year officer because it's. It's based on years of service, you know, within the contract, your steps, I mean, it's just like the teachers, you really have steps and.
But the percentage that we pay for them, you mean seventy-five versus fifty?
It was fifty percent.
Oh.
Covering the elementaries and seventy-five percent for the officer that was covering the secondary, so.
No.
No?
No. It was originally set up because fifty percent. Was based. One of the officers under this contract is that. We s- we split it fifty fifty.
Yep.
That gives the city. The way it was first done, that gives the city the option to pull that officer out of the school. If that officer is needed for the road.
Oh, okay.
Seventy-five percent that we pay. That officer does not come to the school.
Okay, so just build some flexibility in for the city to. Kind of flex a person back and forth, so we can.
And then is that fifty percent the one that gets? Cause for the city, there's only one that's certified with certain training, is that the one that always gets pulled for, for that then?
You know, I never kept track that it's always the one person or not, it's, you know, it's basically what we pay and, and it's. The city would make that decision in terms of, I would imagine the chief or whoever, their layers of administration would decide. Who they would need to pull on a particular day. If it's just a matter that they're short and they need somebody or if there's a crisis happening in the community, they need to pull somebody out, they might pull one officer. But you're right, there, there, uh, each officer specializes in different things, I don't know if that would always be the case, depending on who we are, but here, an example is. Uh, one of our officers is, has specialized training, um, I think in some like child malt treatment. Um, and there's, you know, there's some specialized kinds of training you have to, to, have to, have to be able to interview. Um, children that may have went through a traumatic experience and. You know, I, I'd have to defer to Eric Minx as a long time law officer to maybe give you more details, I, I don't know all the specifics, but. Yeah, officers have different kinds of certification and training, I'd imagine that they would pull officers based upon what their needs are. You know, and thankfully, you know, we haven't, it hasn't been a huge issue. But I mean, we can't control, we certainly understand that if there's some emergency happening in town, that, that they would have to go.
And they do some other like recertifications for other handguns and different things as well during some of those times too, so. They're not a hundred percent in our schools, but a large percentage, even they are.
I mean, a lot of it's, uh, quite honestly, it's just based upon a mutual trust and respect. You know, and uh, you know, we, we have trust and respect that they're not going to take advantage of anything and um. And they have the same for us, I hope, and I guess we would address something if we would find there was an issue. Um.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on then, um, our first action item is second reading of some policies. Does somebody like to make a motion to accept the second reading policies as presented? Motion's been made by Eric Minx, is there a second?
Second.
No. Second by Melissa, any comments or questions on those policies? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, policies are approved, uh, we'll move on to tighter care.
All right, I'm thankful to have some of our um, finest nursing staff here, but I saw three, no, there's two.
She disappeared.
Okay, uh, but we're happy to have you here, thank you, and I asked them to come here. Um, mostly to answer any questions that you might have, but also, you know, certainly um, welcome them to have any commentary if they had some. I know that over the last two weeks, um, there's, they fielded some questions from some of you. And uh, they've gotten you some of those answers. Um, one of the, the pieces and, and Don had asked this question about if this would increase any liability. Um, I have consulted with our attorney, uh, we would have an agreement um, with them, um. You know, with the contract, if you will, that would um. I guess hold us harmless on any kind of um, liability situation that would be related to, to them. Um, how this wo- would work and not everybody was at the last meeting to fully get all the information here. But this would be a partnership with a, I'll, I guess, local uh, urgent care medical. Uh, organization, um, and I think it's called Advocate. Um, and that is a, uh, from what I understand, I've talked to quite a few people, a lot of people utilize those services. Um, at one time that they were in Malacca, now I think that they're more located in Zimmerman. And uh, you know, basically. And, uh, you know, basically what it is would be a partnership with that organization to increase access to care uh, for families who want it, right? It would be a hundred percent, um, voluntary and it's just would be an option. But, uh, many times, and you'll ask the nurses, I mean, then they'll, they document dozens, if not a hundred visits by students to their offices on a given day. Um, and you all, you all have children, you kinda know there's, it can be strep throat, it can be a fever, it could be the flu, it could be, you know, any number of things, right? Earaches. Nurses have the ability to, uh, diagnose to a level, but they're bound by certain licensure requirements. And many times they're calling families and say, you know, you're gonna need to come pick your child up and they're gonna, we recommend that you take them in to see a doctor. You know, some, sometimes families will follow through with that, sometimes they won't, sometimes they try and they can't get in, you know, those kinds of things. This is simply gonna be an option for them, the nurses, when they make that call and say, if you'd like, um, you, we can, they can get in for a virtual doctor visit um, within the next fifteen, twenty minutes, um, so that they would work with this, um, organization. Um, they would have a virtual computer, if you will. Um, they would take vitals and, you know, whatever the doctor needed from the nurses and the doctor would be able to make that diagnosis and potentially send a prescription to the drugstore and then the, the parent can pick that up when underway home from work or what have you. It's designed, um, to only see students where the parent gives that, uh, permission. And I guess the goal is to have the parent, uh, participate in that visit virtually. So it would be similar to like a Zoom call where you'd have a doctor, you'd have the child, um, that would be in a discreet location in the office, um, and you'd have the nurse. And then you'd have the parent that would be virtually on screen as well. And, uh, I guess that's, that's kinda how it would go. Um, you know, I, I think it's, when, when we talk about, uh, the way I look at it is this, right? We're an organization of student learning. That's what we're here to do. But there's certain prerequisites for learning to happen. We talk a lot about students need to feel safe and like they belong and like they're respected. You know, and those kinds of things, but, but their physical health probably trumps all of that, right? So if you're, if, if you have medical needs, you need to have those taken care of. So this is just an opportunity for, for us to increase access to care. For our children and our families, we have about three, three thousand three hundred students within our walls. Actually, probably more than that if you include early childhood and, you know, four or five hundred employees, so that, you know, that's a pretty large number. It's something that, uh, has, that you, is in different schools nationally and then within our state. And certainly within private sector, I do believe crystal cabinets and maybe some other locations even in town have something similar uh, for their employees. This would be of no cost to us, um, other than our in-kind donation of a space for the equipment to be, for that virtual visit to be. And when they used to start doing this, from what I understand, they were huge large machines. Now it's more just like a small laptop with some, you know, you might have something you can look in the ear, something that you can look down the throat and, you know, some of those things, buy, take your vitals and those kinds of things. Just tell me, I'm screwing a lot of this up probably.
You're doing good.
So there has to be some sort of a cost to us though, because what happens if there's a kid getting a checkup or seeing a doctor virtually and then there's another student in there that had, is also ill? Like now we have to have two people because one of the nurses essentially has to.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, the, the, the two, the two things, the two things that are, you know, the in-kind donation of the space and then, and I'm gonna say to start, the in-kind would be access for our nurses to assist that child. Okay, but also let's, I mean, let's keep in mind that they're already assisting the child. You know, they're already doing a lot of that stuff. It just, it would be their presence and I don't, um, their presence to be there. Uh, we, we do have discussions with the medical organization that, depending on how much utilization there is and how much time there is, um, used from our nurses, that there would have to be some kind of contribution, um, from the medical facility towards to offset salary and benefits of our nurses. It's too difficult, in my opinion, to come up with what that would be because, you know, we don't know if anybody's gonna use this. And if they don't, we'll just quit doing it. Um, but people could really use it. And we've consulted with our medical advisor, Dr. Peterson from M Health Fairview. But, you know, with our strong partnership with them, we really didn't wanna like step on their toes. But it, it was, I was almost ironic to me that they actually welcomed that as something that they thought was a good thing because in their, I guess, mission as an organization is to increase access to care. And they, quite frankly, this is coming from Dr. Peterson, they don't have the ability to provide access to care for all the needs that there are. So for example, you know, Dr. Peterson would say if someone calls to ask for an appointment for me, I'm three months out. Right? And it's just hard to get seen from doctors many times.
So is the family, are the families paying for that service? And so let's say student comes in from a potential strep throat, they're doing the virtual visit, our mom and dad and paying that, add the adventure.
It's, 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 it's all just like you're going to the doctor.
Just like you normally would.
It is all.
Essentially saving a step.
It would all be through their.
So, yes and no.
Convenience.
A full big health clinic, um, they attempt to collect funds where they can, so it'll go through insurance initially, but for people who don't have insurance or can't financially, you know, do anything with the copays associated with it, um, eventually it gets written off from Advocate. That's part of the agreement that they go into with the state to do something like that. And I also wanted to point out, um, Fairview didn't have the staffing to do anything with this project. However, they have now agreed to sign up for a third of the cost of all the equipment to be partnered in with it. So they find a noble enough situation that they want to be part of it and they want to be partnered in it. They just didn't have the staff to provide.
And Advocate was.
Oh, Advocate's fine with that.
And we're not like responsible for chasing down people that didn't pay or anything. It's all on Advocate.
The billing has everything to do with them and nothing with us. And the write-off component, it's like, if they were to be eligible for grants or things like that, um, and to be called a school-based health clinic, it's part of what they have to do to with the state.
Oh, yeah.
So.
There, there's two ways that this would go down. If, you know, if the board greenlights this, you know, we, we will have our communications that will get out to all families and try and explain this to them. And if a family wants to say, you know, I think that's a good idea, I might wanna utilize that at some point this year. They can fill out the paperwork or what have you that Advocate needs, right? Um, ahead of time. Just like when you're sending all your back-to-school forms in. All right, if my kid gets sick, uh, anytime this year, they can see the doctor, they got my insurance information, I'm good. If they don't kind of pre-register, if you will, then the next step would be, let's say Nicole sees a student says, you know, we have this option. If you wanted to do this, I can send you this link and you can, you know, fill everything out. And once you get it filled out, then they can be seen.
I think it's gonna be busier and more dangerous, I think.
I do too.
Well, I'm signing that paper against them. Yeah, just saved me forty-five minutes from having to bring him to Zimmerman. Tell him that he has strep or they could have just told me they had strep right there.
But they can't do a strep test.
We can, we can.
Yeah, they can.
So Advocate has, um, agreed to get rapid testing machines for, uh, urine dip, for bladder infections as well as strep, RSV, COVID and influenza. So it's just one swab, but it can test for four different things. We will have access to those in each of the sites. So from what I've heard, I mean, I live in this community, right? I've got kids and we all do and stuff. And just from staff who complain that they can't get in to see the physician to get tested for, you know, strep for three weeks or that kind of thing. Um, there's a huge save there, not to mention the kids who, parents are in the same boat. They can't, they can't get in to see people for something as simple as just.
Yeah, we know we're either going to Malacca or Zimmerman. Like, it's gonna save parents a ton of time.
Well, it's also gonna save us knowing whether the kid actually has to go home or not if they don't have strep.
Yeah, right.
Well, Eric, to speak to your question about, you know, it takes a second person to do this. So if I called home and said, I need you to come pick up your child because I think they have an urine infection, they're camped out in that bed and they're taking up the bed for the next thirty minutes to sixty. Cause a lot of the parents work in the cities, right? So it's a question of if things can actually run faster.
Yeah, my concern was just if you were in that room with that kid while they're doing that virtual visit, who's in charge of the nurse's office? But I think there's plenty of paras and want not to probably assist with something, but.
Our numbers are really high at the elementary school level. Um, we have two staff in each of those health offices already and we've tried to strategically put the telehealth area like within like a hall, like across the hallway from the nurse's office, so someone could step out for a little bit of time and then come back. Uh, high school only has one staff member, but we'll work through that to see, you know, what, what like amount of people come in. And middle school, um, one of the other LSNs will be housed out of there as well as the, the health office nurse. So there'll be two staff there sporadically as well. So we think we can buffer it. But what we will do is we're going to document, obviously, you know, this first year, what our time looks like and what it is spent doing. We figured out a way we can kind of work cyber to our advantage, so it can capture when we're, you know, handing over the school nurse part and turning it over into the, um, SBHC part. And so we'll be able to run reports to kind of capture that data for you. So we'll know after the fact what it looked like.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the piece. It's like, we're kind of, we're kind of building the plane as we're flying it piece. I mean, if, if we get the green light to kind of move forward, there's gonna be some things we need to figure out.
Well, why don't we build the plane first and then fly it?
Well, one of, one of the pieces is, is like how, I don't know how much, if I'm gonna come up with an agreement with the doctor, how much they're gonna pay us for nurses' time. I wouldn't have any, I, I wouldn't have any idea like how much of our nurses' time is actually gonna be needed to do this. And that, you know, that's like, you know, that's really the biggest thing that I'm worried about. Cause I, you know, I don't, I told the doctor this multiple times, we're not interested in, you know, subsidizing or paying for, you know, your nurses.
Staffing, yeah.
You're, you know, if, if we're using nurse, uh, our own nurse time, some of our nurse time, then we would need to be subsidized for that and, and paid for that. So that potentially could offset a portion of a nurse's salary and benefits for us. But I don't really know what that would look like or be, um, at this point. In terms of like all the other details, I mean, it's, it seems complicated, but it's not complicated. I mean, there's a machine that the doctor and the facility is gonna purchase for the equipment. They're gonna provide some training to our, our nursing staff on, in partnership with us on how to utilize that. Then it's a matter of when we're doing these communications out to families, they're going to fill this, the paperwork out if they wanna pre-register and, uh, get signed up. And then, I guess, if a student comes in and, and Nicole or one of the nurses calls the family and say, hey, you know, we think your child might have strep or whatever. Um, you wanna come get him or do you wanna take advantage of this option? Yeah, we'd like to take that care of this option. They would have some kind of a communication tool to, to communicate directly with the doctor. They've told us, I think, that, that we would have priority and seeing their docs, um, so that we, our students would have that within a timely fashion. They see the doc and then, and then we kinda go. But I guess we've never done it before, so there's, I'm just trying to be transparent here. I would imagine there's gonna be a lot of things that we're gonna learn along, along the way and the nur- the the nursing department's gonna have to take the bulk share of that to kind of figure out their systems and, uh, you know, how it would all, all the procedures that would have to take place. The thing that I'm, you know, I'm excited about, and I told the board this the last time, is, you know, I've really encouraged every department to try and be the best that they can be and be innovative and, you know, do, do the best practices that we can do. And this is one of those things that, um, we've talked about in the past and that just, uh, thrilled that the nursing department's excited about this project and wants to move forward with it. But I can't guarantee you that it's, you know, if it, it doesn't work, then I guess the only thing that we would do is say, well, we're not gonna do it anymore.
Gotcha.
And we're not gonna be out, I mean, we don't wanna be out or anything, in, in my opinion.
No, I'm just concerned too that, you know, last year, you know, our nurses were really upset with us on the numbers and, you know, that they could use more staff. I just don't wanna add more to their plate and then being upset with us like they were last year. You know, that was a, you know, we had a lot of issues with that. So are we adding more to their plate and not putting more people in there? Or is it going to be okay? I mean, why are we gonna have those complaints?
Well.
We added an additional staff member for, for this year, just with reorganizing and digging out one of the RN positions that we had. So we had an additional body this year we didn't have last year. So that helps right there. Um, I, I can't tell you what it's gonna look like, uh, as to what the workload's going to be, but we are going into this eyes wide open to track it, knowing that, we might have to have that discussion with Advocate later. And we're writing it into the agreements as well that, you know, um, that something will be sent out from the district, you know, like every trimester that kind of tracks if additional hours were taken by the nurses and, um, so that they are getting information as we're getting it too, to say like, hey, we're spending, you know, a little bit of our time on this, we're spending a lot of our time on this. So like, how do we fix that? We also have attempted, I mean, Mick, Mick will change it all anyways when we send it to him, but we try to also write in there, you know, that, um, that, that there would be that financial assistance that would come from Advocate. If the, the numbers are showing that, if, if we're drowning and then any financial stuff that comes from any of this goes through the advisory council, that would be set up for it. So, um, Advocate does, doesn't take the money and run in the district. You know what I mean? Like we have to sit down at a table together and decide, like, do we need to do something with our staffing? Do we need to do something with our equipment? And so it's meant to be together, working to decide how it's going to look. Um, I am hesitant to push off starting it because, you know, it, they were kind of just waiting on the approval here so that like contracts could be signed and things like that for Advocate and for their equipment. And I wanna make sure that they're not left with bills for things that they don't have.
What would the timeframe be? Like if we were to say yes tonight, what would the timeframe be on implementing it?
Well, um, Jeremy, Paul and myself would like to get it up and running before flu season hits. So, you know, in the fall. Um, in a perfect world, we get it up and running, you know, in time for school to start, but I, I don't know if that's like, we're not. And I want to do it the right way. I wanna make sure we communicate to parents well. Kind of like, this is coming, this is what you can expect. Try to get their attention. So we're kind of pushing for October.
Who else?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, if we could also, we kinda talked about it a little bit, but like add a website or not a website, like a page of just a basic description of what this is, where Advocate is, like, here's a picture of the type of machine that we would use. Like, because as a parent, you know, I'd be like, heck yeah, let's do this. But I also have questions, but I feel like you have a couple visuals and maybe even a link to the form.
The, uh, I mean, it, we're not, this is something that, let's say we were three months ahead of this. Um, we potentially could get out with our back-to-school communications, right? This isn't gonna go out in our back-to-school communication. Our back-to-school communications are coming out on Thursday in two days. This would be what, in, 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 to do it justice, I wouldn't even wanna put it into the back-to-school communications cause there's literally like hundreds of things that parents are gonna be stressing about with that. You know, and they would probably overlook this. This would be something that would come out at a later date. We, we absolutely a hundred percent will develop communications plan and we'll have it all in a backbone of a, of a website with this information. And when we share the information out to families, it would have that. And it, and it may even include some videos and some other things that would explain it to them. And, uh, then we would get that, because the communication side of it is gonna be pretty huge. And we've gotten to where we pretty much build everything we do into our, into the backbone of our website, even like when people. We've gotten to where we pretty much build everything we do into our into the backbone of our website, even like when people. Get their back-to-school stuff, they click on a link, it takes them to a website and everything's on there. And that would be the same thing with this.
I am very glad it is not going out with the back.
Yeah, it it would be, it would be, we would, we would have to, you know, we we would be developing a communication strategy. And then we, the next steps would be developing a communication strategy, working with our attorney to kind of draft up what this agreement would would be. Right? And then we would uh, and we would do the planning, and I think Nicole is is uh, planning to have like an advisory. Uh, group with different constituents to advise the program and. We're getting, uh, you know, we have two docs uh, from two different organizations that are, you know, both enthusiastic about this. Um, and we're leaning on our uh, medical advisor, Dr. Peterson from M Health Fairview, to help us with some of these questions he's gonna ask us too. And the the other piece too is, and some of you have seen through the MSBA clippings and. The even the state and federal news is that this, there's some federal grants that have come out that uh, they're really actually kind of starting to push for some of this. Access to care um, across the country, so we will be reviewing what those are to see if we can get additional dollars to help support that.
Well, if this were to pass tonight, I was wondering if we would be able to get like a, just set right now, say like. The first meeting in January, can we get an update on how it's going and then like at the end of the year, like the May meeting maybe, how how it went and.
Absolutely.
Just, yeah, so we're not in the dark either, I guess.
Yeah, January, I mean, if we start in October, that would be a three-month, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, October, November, December.
Just an update even, just like, hey, this is going awesome, or hey, this sucks.
Or to know what our nurses feel about it and the different workloads.
It's just kinda cool to get an update.
You know, and I would think that would be nice to see as well is when we're rolling this out to have some. Um, forums where those doctors are present, and so our parents can come in, our staff can come in. I think that has to also be built into this rollout, that we gotta offer that. You can't just roll it out, but they need to be present and offer where parents can come in and ask their questions. Staff can ask their questions. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of questions on every side, and I think they're gonna have to provide those doctors. And I think our nursing staff and, you know, do some of those. Forums at different times so that parents can get a more comfortable feeling with this as well.
I don't think anyone's gonna show up to a forum to ask questions.
Email.
Yeah, the tough thing about that, um, is it Advent? Yeah, the one in Zerman, right? Like, a lot of them are uh, PAs. And, I mean, my family, my, all five of us were there with family two hours each other, and we all saw, we saw three different PAs. So it's, there's just so many different people involved with that clinic. I don't know if you could have the doctor.
I thought you guys said there was two that were mainly gonna handle this.
So the the chief medical advisor for Fairview is kind of leading on Fairview's end, and then Advocate has their chief medical person as well, Dr. Legra.
Right.
And he's going to be handling it. He handles the whole project. He's the only doctor who's gonna be seeing patients to start. For us, and then once he has an idea what that does to their workload, then he'll be branching it out to the other practitioners, because they have three clinics in total. So that's why they'll be able to see us quickly, because it'll be us reaching out to them, and then they determining between those urgent care doctors who can see us. Um, I think everybody would be fine with that, actually, whether it's a forum or whether it's at a conference night or an open house or through email or whatever. Um, I had already asked Advocate and Fairview to send staff to help with this process, to explain it and talk to people. Um, both parties agreed to be at the health fair too, in October, for that reason as well. So, and those will be those two physicians who will be at that table as well as other staff that they have as well, so. I I think everybody would be fine with that. I think it's needed. Parents will have questions, staff will have questions, and it's a good thing.
Like, you know, I guess in in concept and theory, um, you know, we need to know if the board can. Allow us to move forward with, you know, putting all the work in to kind of make this happen.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize administration to proceed as presented.
All right, motion's been made by Eric Strandberg, seconded by Chad.
If you're saying there's no money involved. Then why isn't this an administrative decision?
So there is money, it's just, it's not for from, like, they're gonna be billing insurance.
And and Eric, so there is, I mean, honestly, I was debating that in my head too, and I even kind of. Made that comment at a last board meeting. I didn't necessarily know. Yeah, as as far as I'm, you know, I've been a suit for what, thirteen years? It never hurts to have the board approve something. As a matter of fact, you know, why not? It's it's good to have the board. Um, do do I think that this is something that we could have looked at as more of an administrative? You know, piece? Yeah, I think we could have. We could have moved forward without. Involving the board, but I guess the way that I I don't ever really want to do anything that the board isn't gonna support. I think that's bad business for our superintendent, right? I want to make sure that it that you can support it, right? And that's why we brought it. Um, to you, the last meeting is more of a kind of an informational piece, and as we discussed. Um, at the board table, I think there was the thought that let's have the board vote on that, and I think that was. What I heard was kind of the consensus from the board members that were here, and uh, you know, honestly, I don't have a problem with that. Um, I'd rather know if you did support it, because then we're, obviously, we're not gonna. You know, we're not gonna spend the time to do it.
Yeah, I think we all agree, and nursing too, you know, we we believe it's a worthwhile project, and we believe the community will. Really benefit and appreciate and utilize it, but um, but. You guys are the community too, like, we want your support in doing this, obviously, so it's important that. Whether needed a vote or not needed a vote, like Ben said, it never hurts to ask, and we definitely want you to be a part of this to help decide. Um, you know, how it's done and then communicate to people in the community that it's gonna be available.
Well, especially too, if we end up having to bill them for time, because it's taking more time. And we don't have this in place, then we're kind of backtracking that as well, so it's kind of a, you know, it's kind of a catch. Either way, so.
And this is only for students.
So this is for staff.
And staff, but enrolled students and staff.
So, school-based health centers, they they all look very different, if I'm honest, even on a national level, like. How they're handled and what they offer, um, some can do the entire community. I look at it as more of a security issue. If we're opening up our doors to let um, anybody come in to utilize those services. I mean, it gets billed the same way either way, but I'm. I'm more concerned about the the security components and the safety of the students from that angle, so. Um, I was against opening it, the flickades all the way up for that. I think that staff and enrolled students, and enrolled students, you know, it. Online is enrolled, homeschool, you know, if they're coming through this district, they're, you know, it's a part of her enrollment body, then I think that's fair. Um, so.
Yeah, so if we get the green light from the board, um, we have a communication meeting set up on Thursday to set up the communications. And then we'll be working with attorneys to get some language drafted up that we would share with you so that you could take a look at it. You know, and then I think, I think October is a great goal to have. I mean, that's if we need to take it slower than that, if we come up with different unforeseen things, then we will do that, but. Like I said, every, we want to be the best we can be and provide the best services we can be in every part of our district, including our nurses and health services. Um, and and we do have some um, past practice with something similar to this in that we do. We have for years uh, had a therapeutic, um, therapy, um, psychologists. And and different um, private organizations come in where we provide the in-kind donation of. A conference room, if you will, or a space for um, that therapist to to meet. Um, for more school-based mental health, uh, because of course that is an issue that some of our students need some help with. And uh, and we'd rather have them out of the classroom for a half an hour to receive those services and get back to class. Versus, you know, be out for a whole day where they have to drive to wherever.
Any other question or comments? All right, motion's been made and seconded. Um, all in favor, say aye. Post. All right, you have the green light. Um, item ten C.
Thank you guys for coming. Just asking us to come back and answer questions, and you can email any of us at any time. I would much rather you do than than guess what's going on behind the scenes, and we'd love to come back and give you an update on how things are going.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mark Park lease agreement.
Uh, this is the piece that uh, that we had talked to the board about, uh, I think the last, at the last. A couple of meetings, uh, this is something we're asking you to approve, that by having this formal agreement, this will allow. Us um, to add this to our lease levy. Um, it will have just a very minimal impact. Um, to our our community, I think, uh. Ten cents or so, um, a month. Um, and this is something that is similar to what we have with the hockey arena and some other places that we do leases for. Um, this will allow us the ability to um, capture a. Amount of money that we can provide to the city so that then they can make the agreed-upon. Um, improvements to Mark Park that we've been asking for for uh, probably decades. Um, specifically trying to uh, make improvements to. The girl softball varsity field and then all of the other fields that we utilize. Um, for our varsity and our uh, JV baseball and softball. And we have a list that we're working with them on in terms of our priority items. That uh, we think we can tackle all those things to have that, those facilities be up to par with. Um, some of our other facilities in the district, so. You know, by having this formalized agreement, we're able to add it to our lease agree, lease levy.
I'll make a motion to accept the lease agreement from Mark Park.
All right, um, motion made by Eric Strandberg, is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Chad, questions?
In in this contract, it says that because of. Um, pandemic weather or whatever, that cost from twenty-five thousand goes down to eighteen, right?
Yep.
Okay, so jog my memory. During the pandemic, did we use those facilities?
Not the first summer.
Not the spring of twenty, the spring of twenty twenty, we did not, uh, following year. Yeah, we did. School was still kind of wonky and we did that.
Yeah. So, so to give you an idea, what what we have done in the past, Eric, is um. When we haven't had, been able to do a lease levy to get additional revenue to to give them, they just sent us a bill every year. Um, I believe it's five thousand uh, dollars, and that is just for what they call field maintenance. That's the line, you know, just your basic general maintenance. We've never had additional dollars. For them to make upgrades, if you will, and I think these additional dollars, so in this twenty-five thousand. It it's kind of, we built that on, yeah, there's still gonna have five thousand or so of that mon- money. That will be for the general maintenance of the facility, right? Um, but then that's gonna give an additional twenty thousand dollars, if you will, for the um. Time of this agreement, which I believe is five years, um, to do big projects. And honestly, we we have contributed dollars to bigger projects at different points in times. And it's kind of like a year-by-year, case-by-case basis, and what we have to do to to. To make those upgrades is we have to pull from our capital budget, which then we're always debating, well. Do we want to spend twenty thousand dollars to, you know, move the the fence in or to, you know, whatever the issue is. Bring bleachers there, add some netting, um, to stop the softball from, you know, hurting people. Um, so you're always comparing that to like, geez, we got a hole in the roof. Well, the hole in the roof takes priority every time, so you never, we're never able to make the upgrades. That we really would like to see for that facility, so that's the intent of this, is to have. The additional dollars built in so that we can have these upgrades every year, so like, you know. A a scoreboard and. Enhanced dugouts.
The activities committee has been working with them on that prioritizing of those things.
It's also.
So when we give them twenty-five thousand, we are expecting them then to spend it.
Right, and they are, like, this is like a good faith agreement, like, hey. We are agreeing to that we are wanting to use your facilities and help you improve it.
Because we know who's in charge over there.
Fine, trust me, I, yep, I know.
Well, we we we've, so basically, there's kind of a, there will be an addendum, or there is an already existing addendum, if you will. That isn't actually in the contract that has the list of priorities, like. Year one, this this project would happen, year two, this project would happen. The if there's complexities with this, because there's other entities involved. Like, this twenty thousand dollars a year isn't gonna do the projects that we need to be done, but that's where the associations are. Are still raising money, and the city will be contributing some money, so it's still kind of like this joint effort, but. We u- those are our our softball and baseball fields, and I think the way I look at it is, if we own those, if we own our own softball and baseball fields. We'd probably be spending that amount of money, plus a lot more to have our own facility.
Well, Karen looked, I just priced out lights and whatever for the middle school to make that a varsity complex, and that was approaching a million dollars. Just to make that legit.
One of the first projects that is gonna be done. And it doesn't necessarily enhance the softball facility, but it's the grounds. If you take a look out there, it's all basically dirt. Um, between all the fields, and they, so there's gonna be some asphalt put in there, um, and that's. Project is gonna go in between all of the fields, plus I think take care of some of the spots they've had trouble with. In Soulham Field, um, from what I understand, they've had some significant trips and falls over the years. Where they need to take care of just the actual surface, um, to try and eliminate that, so I think that's gonna be a project. I think the netting to take care of the softball and baseballs that are, you know, cool everywhere is gonna be a a project. But, you know, we're talking about the bringing, bringing the actual fence in, this is.
Varsity field on the girl softball, bringing that fence into whatever their regulation distance is.
Yeah, to to be.
And then allowing us to potentially put advertising on it as well.
So, I mean, we leased that that facility, we just haven't had a lease agreement, because we haven't had a lease agreement, we haven't been able to do the lease levy. Which is something we have the authority to do for anything that we lease. So now we have the document, we can do the lease levy, we can get those funds, we won't have to use capital dollars to do those projects. We'll be able to use the lease levy dollars.
I just don't understand the language about the eighteen thousand, if there's a a pandemic, why are we not just le- lease leveling? Doing that for twenty-five thousand every year? I mean, what's the point of going down seven thousand?
More than likely, they'll still do projects that year, but it will, there won't be the use of that, you know, the five thousand probably isn't gonna get. The major side of it isn't gonna get used as much, but they're still would try to finish other projects, because if we're in another pandemic. Point where everything's shut down, the whole facility's not getting used.
Yeah, you're right, that was the intent of that, is that even if we had, let's say, during the pandemic year, we couldn't use it, of course, we're not gonna probably pay for the. The maintenance, because we're not using it, but what we want to do, a project that would add to that facility, probably.
Okay, but, so this twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand, that's gonna. Is that going into a bank for a bigger project, or is it gonna get spent every single year? Why are we going down? What, I mean, hopefully a pandemic never happens again, but. To me, that language makes.
You're saying because we bet the twenty-five, because we've been used it at some point.
You're gonna use it at some point anyway, and if it's like.
That's all, just in case.
Just in case of what?
If something happens, they don't utilize it like they thought.
We're building a fund for bigger projects.
We're in partnership with the city and with the two youth organizations, so all of those funds get put together.
We're in partnership with the city and with the two youth organizations, so all of those funds get put together to train. Capitalize on the three entities to get these projects done.
So is the language the same for all entities then?
I have no idea.
No, there's like, no, there's no way that youth softball baseball association would be able to give twenty-five thousand.
No, but they're not gonna sign a lease agreement. And this is kind of like our hockey agreement with the. With the. Yeah, you know, all the terms, letters.
Flip side, then then in a pandemic, why why isn't the language just five thousand dollars then, instead of eighteen?
Cause the five thousand is really more for that general.
So the general, then why not zero?
Well, we we could put it at zero, but we're figuring that's a perfect opportunity to get a project done, because we're not utilizing it. So you could do pavement between fields or whatever it might be.
You know what, probably, i- i- you know what? And 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 pre-COVID, this, there wouldn't have never been language like that. No one would have even thought about this. And and we, you know, let's knock in with that we won't have another one. And, you know, here's what we do. Yeah, a lot of times, we try not to recreate the wheel, so we we reached out to dozens of places that have similar things like this. Got sample agreements, and what we saw in some of the sample agreements, they had language in there, and they probably had to put in there, because they had some issue. When during the COVID year. And uh, so we thought, well, let's keep it in there. Do we think that's probably gonna ever happen? No.
Hopefully not during that time.
You know.
All right, your questions, I'll answer.
They're trying to fall on us with their stories.
All right. All in favor to accept the Mark Park ball fields lease agreement as presented, say aye. Agreement is approved.
I was waiting for the.
All right, last item. We need to uh accept. Identifying Ben as our identified official with authority. Motion's been made by Eric, makes sense or a second, second. Second by Sue. Any comments or questions? Uh, it is a resolution, resolution, so we'll go by roll call, starting with Chad.
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, all right.
And then you're gonna have to find someone to. To give authority to, you can do it.
No, no.
We got no additions to the agenda. There is one future meeting I want to bring to your attention, August twenty-eighth. Is our back to school meeting with staff. Um, we'd like everybody to come if you can, um, seven fifteen AM in the pack.
Yeah, we're starting seven thirty sharp, but it's always nice uh for you to be there to be the welcoming committee.
Yeah.
Smiles on your face, shaking hands. Tell everybody how much you appreciate them.
There you go.
All right, you're back to you, you're back to two meetings a month.
Don't move so much. All in favor say aye.